If we want to keep moving in theory, I have no problem with it. But I feel like five minutes for each city councilman, I mean, for each city councilman to discuss a topic is more than enough time, as well as you get a second round to also discuss. So in general, you get ten minutes, each one of us is getting ten minutes to discuss an item that's upon the, which keeping it mov- if you don't have a decision that you can make in five minutes, then that's where a motion should come in and play first the table or first to move on with this item. But I don't think that we should waste time on spending twenty to thirty minutes just talking in circles. It makes us be able to move quickly. Uh, we don't, if we don't have all the information in which we would like, then we can move to agenda item. But for us to just hold it up and continue to move in theory, I have no problems with it.
Yeah, Councilwoman Jones?
Um, I agree with Councilman Jones. I think what we have to do is be mindful of the item that we're talking about, because we get hung up on a lot of items that are not even necessary to have all this long drawn-out conversation and things that we do need to really talk about and address, we don't. So I think as individuals, we just need to be mindful on what we're bargaining up our time about. Is it irrelevant or is it not? And stop spending a whole bunch of time, because we've sat here and talked about stuff that wasn't even important. And so we need to be mindful of their, of citizens' time as well as our time. We spend a lot of time up here saying sometimes nothing.
Councilwoman Rollin?
I definitely agree. The issue is how can we put a time, a five-minute time restriction on some of the more, uh, we don't get to pick and choose who we give more time to, which again, this is going to limit us. We just talked about things that we didn't know whether it'd be irrelev- uh, we had a presentation that went over five minutes. All our presentations went over five minutes. We don't get to pick and choose what gets five minutes and what doesn't. I think this handicaps us. Robbery, rules of orders, and our current policies allows us to move the agenda without setting these restrictions. So with that, I, I'm, I move that we table this agenda item, um, to have, uh, I, I move that we table agenda item five, um, with no further discussion.
Sorry. It has been properly moved and seconded that item five be tabled. You heard the motion or did you hear the questions?
Of course.
So ready, this Council Wallace, I think you're first, then Council Randall.
So I say, I, I do read some, depending on the importance of it, um, that it needs to be discussed, but there are some of them that, you know, we, we should have our questions laid out, or we should have talked to people beforehand so that we can get the information needed to make a decision. However, let's say in a hypothetical, and this is for Councilman Jones, um, there is something that we do need to get information on. We, we use our five minutes. Is it possible to make a motion and say, okay, we have five more minutes? That way, we are all in agreeance.
No, what up? You're next. You're next. Hold down, hold down. Council Randall, you're next. Go ahead.
No, I'm gonna go ahead.
Yeah, so like I said, the idea, idea is that we all feel that this is something that is, that is very important, that we need more information, then the motion will make sure it's all in agreeance. But if, if it's something that four of us don't believe, like this is done, and it's just a one-on-one match, you know, then we just don't, then we just don't, uh, accept the, accept the motion so that we can make the decision. And that way, it really is, it brings the ability that if it is something of high importance, that we now have the choice instead of not having a choice and just, because we don't want to cut each other off. So it gives us the opportunity as, you know, a body to choose which way we want to go.
Council Randall, you're next.
I'm ready.
It's just like before the meeting how citizens are allowed an opportunity to talk three minutes. Now, each citizen when they get up, they're cognizant that they have three minutes to say whatever they have to say, and knowing that they're, that we might not move to give them extra time upon to talk about the importance of the issue in which they have. But when we see a citizen, like takes over or go to three minutes and we see that their issue is important, then one of us several times has made a motion to extend the time period in which that citizen, uh, had been allotted. So all this is saying that, A, be cognizant that you generally have about ten minutes to discuss this topic upon your personal self. After that, we can move, once the time runs out, to extend extra additional time to this area. But if, if, if council doesn't feel like this agenda item needs any more attention to it, then we can move along with our agenda. Policy is us taking over our meetings and us being allowed the opportunity to do and say what we want to happen in the meeting. We all said we want the meetings to run smoother, but we want to continue to talk about it in theory. As with a lot of items or a lot of agenda items that we talk about, we all have things that in which we want to get done, but don't have something, policy just keep moving in theory, which hasn't been working for us.
Councilwoman Rollin?
If we wanted to move the agenda item, we would call for the question. And so I, we can go back and forth. That's what we have. Now, maybe we do it without a policy and just say, hey, we set a timer for ten minutes when we're talking about the issue, and that's, that, and this, and we have to be, the city secretary or the city attorney says, hey, you've been on this topic for ten minutes, and that gives us an opportunity to say, okay, well, we've been talking about it too long. We don't need any policy that restricts us on agenda items that may be longer or shorter. I think if we just, uh, just, again, just say, hey, we're gonna have the, he may not, he may try to charge us for that, but the, whoever our attorney is, say, hey, we're gonna, just ten, you know, just give us a notice after ten minutes, so we know that we've been bogged down on the issue, and we could either reframe our questions and move forward. But I don't think we need a policy to do that. And I, so I want to, um, call for the question.
That ends the discussion. That ends discussion and then the que-
Call for the question. But, uh, what, well, all those in favor say aye. I invite to-
What's proposed?
So much discussion without the motion to postpone. Great example. And that, and that was on limiting. All those in favor say aye. Opposed have the same right?
Nay.
Wait a minute, let's, let's do a roll call vote.
Three, two.
Then three nays? Raise your hand?
Nay.
Okay, so we've got Councilmen Three, Four, and Five with nays, and Councilman One and Two to, to-
No tie, so it keeps going.
To postpone. Okay, so the motion dies. Is there a sepsical motion? Are we going to dispose of item five, folks?
Uh, I move that we adopt the- Uh, I move that we adopt the policy for agenda items to have a time limit in which each item is discussed, uh, as is stated in the policy that was proposed last meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that discuss, consent, and take action on a policy for agenda items to have a time limit in which each item is discussed, as was stated in the last meeting? Do we know what that timeframe was?
Five minutes.
No, it was five, five minutes. So it added, uh, item E to section one point five eight, where it says, whenever individual citizens or city employees appear before the city council to speak or to present a testimony relative to any item on the agenda, each council member shall limit the question or remarks for each speaker to an additional maximum period of five minutes, including time needed by the speaker to answer the council questions. The person answering the question shall be permitted to complete the answer despite the expiration of five minutes, five minutes. Also in section, uh, one point five, one point five, one five rules of debate, it added G and H, and all other deliberations by the city council, the same initial maximum period of five minutes per council member shall apply going to debate with any item on the agenda. A council member may question or remark as to each speaker or debate any agenda item for a second maximum period of five minutes, but only after all other council members designed to be heard on the matter have exercised the initial opportunity for questioning remarks or debate. Subsequent rounds may ensue in the same manner, each limited to five minutes per council member until questioning remarks or debate has been completed. H, going here, of the agenda item entitled matters presented by council members, each council member should be limited to an initial period of up to five minutes after all city council members wishing to speak have made remarks in the first round. Each member who desires additional time to speak for a second period of up to five minutes, unused time for the first round should not carry over to the second round.
Okay.
Mayor, is that going to be an amendment to the ordinance?
I have no idea.
Okay. Because if it's an amendment, you're gonna have to do it in the form of another ordinance amending the code of ordinances, if that's what you're doing.
Right. If it's coming from an ordinance, only ordinance can replace it.
Can amend it, so you're gonna have to post-
So we'll have to turn that over. If it passes once the vote goes, because that was our discussion-
Directing someone to prepare that.
They want to take it to council for sorting that out and doing what y'all do.
Take me.
Uh, call for the question. Unread, uh, unread, is it, Council Rollin?
So the, the five minutes, five minutes, two rounds, that means that, so we're gonna limit all presentations to five minutes.
And you, you can make a motion to, to move it, just move it to five minutes for each, but I call for the question.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Just do a roll call vote. Councilman Rollin?
Yes, excuse me. And motion is to have an ordinance prepared to incorporate this policy-
Update that.
And bring that back to the city council next meeting or whenever.
Yes, yeah. Yes, uh, what, what's the motion?
That's what I'm asking.
I don't know what the motion is.
Uh, the motion is that we accept the, uh, policy in which the ordinance changed to five minutes, that it's a lot of it, and which the version that-
And you'll give a text to the city secretary?
Okay. Because we gotta come back and vote on it.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so roll call vote, because we still need to vote on Councilman Jones moving this forward. Councilman Rollin?
Nay.
Councilman Randall?
Nay.
Councilman Jones?
Yay.
Councilman, Councilwoman Williams?
Yay.
Councilman Wallace?
Yay.
Motion passes. Uh, and, and just point of information, keep in mind, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, you're almost an hour on each issue. Just, just keep that in mind. Five minutes is a very long time. Twice is ten minutes, just pointing out. Okay, um, uh, Mr. Johnson, you have anything you need to share with us? Okay, good, we appreciate you. Judge, you passed off a written report?
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, how much do we lawfully, uh, pay in the, um, here?
Okay, Chief?
Did you all get the, uh, the emails ever sent to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to proceed with, uh, making those, uh, making those moves and making those items.
We need to put on the agenda, but I, I did also all, I received, I called you, but the number you gave is, and it doesn't work through your email. But, um, I think, um, well, because I called you to see if you were already gonna have the mayor put that on the agenda. So just like, uh, uh, there's an agenda item currently, and, and I'm just saying because of what I see, agenda item eleven says discuss, consider, and take action on advertising to fill the city's, uh, treasurer and city secretary's vacancy. And so I'm thinking that the mayor should have put that on the agenda.
According to, uh, according to Attorney Hayes, it didn't need to be on the agenda. I actually made the call to see if it needed to be. Uh, we're not, uh, we're, we're moving some people into some full-time positions, so we're not going out and seeking anybody with the exception of the people that we were hired for the part-time position.
So these are positions that we've already budgeted for, so it doesn't, so it doesn't have to come back? So you're saying because we've already budgeted for it, it doesn't have to come back?
All these positions are budgeted for.
Right.
There's nothing, matter of fact, this position will actually save us five thousand dollars when we move one person into full-time, because it will take that sixty-two thousand away and bring it to, bring it to fifty-six. So it saves the city about five thousand dollars.
I, I, I think it's a good idea, but I think if we're following our ordinances on the process, the current process we have is, as the chief outlined, um, in his report, um, the, the whole process, the only thing that's missing is that the mayor should have had it, should have put, put it on the agenda for us to vote to fill the vacancy, and then, and then they would have gone through the process that they already have. And so I just, I'm simply saying that what you've done is correct, it just should have been on the agenda.
Okay.
Not, not according to the city attorney, so the mayor shouldn't have done anything that the city attorney said doesn't need to-
And can I bring this to your attention? You're working on an ordinance that was, that was adopted in nineteen eighty. That was adopted in nineteen eighty. You voted on a new personnel manual that you, that you voted on in twenty seventeen. It virtually gives you the same thing that you're, you're talking about now, but it, it takes away from that long, long process. But you're looking at an ordinance that was, that was in nineteen eighty.
I, I get it, and we can update it, but currently, that's what we, what we operate in, and I'm simply, I'm, I'm not even, so I'm, I'm, I'm simply saying, what you did is correct after we talked. The only thing we're asking is that the mayor put it on the agenda so we can move the process forward, and, and it's done. I think what you're proposing is a great idea. I just think, we just need to follow what's currently there. If we need to update it, bring us something that updates the ordinance, because it's city charter, then our code of ordinances, and so that's, that's my only- Well, I, I guess when the city attorney says it's not required, and maybe because it's the police officer situation, it's very different than a regular civilian employee. But when you say the mayor should have put it on, the city attorney says it's not required, guess what? The city, the city attorney, the city attorney, they supersede our ordinance, and I'm just-
What needs to happen is we need to change that ordinance, or either you need to, or either that ordinance needs to go away, because you're looking at an ordinance, and you're also looking at a personnel manual that you updated in twenty seventeen that this council voted on.
And you're also saying that we can't do that with sworn personnel, what we might do with a civilian personnel. It doesn't, we don't have any distinctions. And, well, I'll be fine. Councilman Williams?
I think, um, what's the attorney name that was sitting right there today?
Olson.
And, and Councilman Rollin asked the question about should city council know about hiring and so on and so on, and his statement was yes. Only thing is, we didn't need to know about anything, uh, I guess, personal or whatever, but the council should be the one approving the hiring, and that's what he said, sitting in that chair right there, when Councilman Rollin asked him that question.
I'll, I'll beg your differ on that, Councilwoman. I don't think he said that you guys should be approving them. I think that what he said is you should know about those hires.
No, he said-
And that's, and that's virtually, and that's virtually what, uh, that's virtually what your, your twenty seventeen manual says, uh, on that personnel manual, if you look at it.
Our co-section employ, on other employees, if you go to the city charter, city ordinances, code of ordinances, under employment.
Yes, sir.
It lists five processes. First process is for the city council to declare vacancy, and that's all we're doing. You've done the other parts, then after that, it says that the supervisor comes to the mayor saying that we need this, you sent us that information, the mayor brings it to us and says, hey, we need this, declare the vacancy. We, we, we vote and we declare the vacancy. From that process, it goes back to your department. You have a, a panel, an employment panel, where you have the mayor sets up two or three, I think it says three people needs to be on the committee. It, it says it in our ordinances, three people needs to be on the committee. Then you bring the recommendations back. Chief says, hey, I got these two people I want to hire. City council says, uh, Mr. Mayor, Chief, you did your due diligence, that's who we're gonna hire. I don't think we want to get into the weeds of the process, but the process currently right now identifies the five steps on how to hire an employee for the city of Prairie View. It doesn't dis- distinguish between police department, city secretary, or city attorney. So I'm saying if we, everyone's, we want to use the same documents that everyone has, and if you go to the city charter, you can pull it up right now, city ordinances, under employment, it lists those five things that I gave you.
But sir, that's what I'm, that's, that's what I'm asking. You guys need to review that. That's, that was written in nineteen eighty.
And it hasn't always been followed by the city council.
That's something that you guys need to review. It was written in nineteen eighty. And currently, your, your current, your current policy on your, on your personnel manual reads totally different. I know exactly what you got, but it was, it was written in nineteen eighty.
Uh, Chief?
Almost thirty years ago.
Your predecessor was hired sight unseen by this council and ratified about three weeks later, and I have the documents to prove it. So all, all I'm saying is, let's be consistent, gentlemen.
And I have nothing to do with that.
Let's just be consistent.
All, all I'm saying is, I'm asking you, if that's the case, then you guys need to look at those and then figure out which one we want to go by. Do you want to update the other one, or you want to take away the personnel manual?
So, Mr. Mayor? Last, last meeting, we talked about this right here.
Yes, sir.
It's called section nine point two zero one, criteria required for employment by the city. We talked about following this process and, and moving, and moving it forward. Whether it be, needs to be updated, the mayor or anyone can bring up any updates that, to go to this ordinance. But right now, the city, this is what codifies how we move forward in the employment regulations. Criteria, number one, a vacancy in a city table of ordinances has been declared by city council. That's number one. Number two, a vacancy ad has been published given particulars, formal applications of, uh, haven't been approved and received by city council, a reference check haven't been made on three or more likely to be accepted.
Sir, and I, and I know what you're saying. I, I'm not disputing what that said. I read it. I have it over here. I'm not disputing that. What I am saying is you have that, and then you have a personnel policy. One of them we need to go by.
So could I?
And the personnel policy addresses hiring as well.
I, I will, I will recommend to lead the work on council to look at the personnel manual and look at this, uh, article nine, on whether we need to update this section, and so I'll make that recommendation in our meeting. Uh, Counselor? How, how would it work on a personnel manual that was presented and adopted by the council? Does it not, how, how does it-
Depends on the format.
-prior ordinance?
Depends on how it was approved by council. If it was approved as an amendment to an ordinance, then it would control over the ordinance. If it's not an ordinance, it isn't going to control over the provisions of the ordinance.
Okay. So it's just like to find out.
This, this is a section about reports, so we shouldn't be talking about specific items. If he's not giving a report, then, um, the agenda should be moved.
Absolutely. But, uh, City Council reports, Council Rollin?
Uh, briefly, citizens, it's always an honor and pleasure to serve. Um, had the opportunity to represent the city at TML Texas Municipal League Conference in Fort Worth, where I'm also the treasurer for the Texas Association of Black City Council Members. Uh, we had the opportunity, we had Olson, and Olson was the attorney, was the firm that went over Public Officials and Ethics, uh, presentation during that, that week. Uh, we also, I had the opportunity to serve on the Resolutions Committee for the TML Board. Uh, I was a voting member, and I also served, uh, the city for the TML Business Meeting as a voting member. Had the opportunity to participate, well, I wouldn't say participate, but it got rained out, a golf tournament, uh, the TJ Patterson, uh, Senior Golf Classic, which raised over eighty thousand dollars, uh, in scholarships that we give to young people to go to college. We have four students at Prairie View who's, who's currently receiving, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, to, to go to school. Um, we had our annual president's luncheon at, uh, Tarrant County Community College, uh, which we had the opportunity to engage with some young men. They have a Men of Distinction Program on that campus, um, so I, um, I had the opportunity to represent the city. Um, we also, with the Prairie Chamber of Commerce and Alpha Alpha Attorney Incorporated, have been, um, going out in the local areas and giving what is called Educator's Toolkit. If you know any of any educators in the area, if you know any local educators in the area who needs a toolkit, it's just a simple way of, instead of giving backpacks to students, we give a toolkit to the educators for, with supplies. So we've had, we've had, uh, two organizations come together to support people in our community. Um, had the opportunity to meet with, uh, myself and the mayor, met with Dr. Baldwin about, um, trying to come up, what about, uh, Department of Agriculture and, and so talking about identifying farmers and engaging local business people. We came up with some ideas, uh, that talked about buy Prairie View, and so you'll see Economic Development 4B, the Prairie Chamber, working together, uh, to move these things, along with students on campus and Dr. Baldwin's, uh, marketing and management classes. Um, the second thing is that the Prairie Chamber of Commerce meets on the third, the last Thursday of the month at twelve o'clock in Alumni Building. Also had the opportunity to, uh, been on several conference calls with the Legal Defense Fund and the Texas NAACP in reference to, uh, ongoing litigation with, in reference to early voting. Um, as you know, currently, for this first week of early voting, there is no polling locations in the city of Prairie View. Zero. And so that's something that, uh, that, um, that some people are gonna be plaintiffs in litigation moving forward, uh, against, uh, Waller County. Um, and the, I am also the off-campus advisor for the Prairie NAACP, and so, uh, many students were disenfranchised with the opportunity, not just students, it was residents, right? So some people are focusing on student population, and some people are focused on, on the city population. Irrespective of what, which one is greater, the city of Prairie View has zero voting locations, um, in early voting. If you look at the total days that the city of Prairie View has in early voting, it's only five compared to all the remaining municipalities having eleven or more. And so that's something that we feel, um, that, that, uh, the, the attorneys that we're working with feels that's an issue. It's something, one of the issues that, uh, when I was a student in two thousand and four, I had the ability to, I was one of the plaintiffs in the lawsuit that had to do with pre-clearance. We don't have DOJ pre-clearance section five anymore, um, so, uh, you know, we don't have that, that protection. So again, if you want to know any, any more additional information, please talk to me after the meeting. Thank you.
Council Randall?
No report.
Council Jones?
Uh, I had the pleasure, uh, along with me and, uh, Councilman Wallace, to, um, go up to condition this court and go and try to fight for polls, for us to have more polling sites and go on further. And going forward with a affirmative action plan on how we'd like to stop, uh, this from happening in the near future, um, C C six, since, uh, especially sitting on the audience who as well, uh, was part of that committee and team. Also, um, I had the opportunity, uh, to talk to Mr. Nancy Scott through email, in which she emailed me back, uh, project agreement and work, work request forms for the interlocal agreement, in which I've been trying to schedule a meeting with the mayor to see how we can get some of our, uh, roads, uh, county roads to get worked on, and that's, uh, going forward as well. I think probably Exante hit on this as well. Uh, Miss, excuse me, I'm, whichever name, or Miss Doughty?
Yes.
Uh, she, she's been very helpful with a couple of projects in which, uh, I, Exante has proposed and planned out, as well as, uh, uh, City Councilman Randall, uh, with seeing some of the things that she's took the initiative and done in Prairie Hills, that I think that we was able to do in, uh, more House of Divisions, it would help, uh, us be, um, better and more effective and efficient, uh, city council members for the city of Prairie View. So I'm pretty sure that, uh, him and their future, we have more, uh, meetings and appointments with her, so that ways we could get some of the great work that she's, uh, done in Prairie Hills to go, go out the rest of the city of Prairie View. And as always, I'm thankful and grateful for our opportunity to serve you guys.
Councilman?
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to say, I had the opportunity to meet with Miss Ada Bennett, who lives out on Richards Road, and she basically just wanted me to come out and see how tall the grass is, um, on Wash Chapel Road and Richards Road, and it is, it is very high, just like the grass has been on Orange Road and in other areas of the city. And unfortunately, our moors broke, and unfortunately, a lot of families don't have people who have tractors and moors, um, because Mr. Walker has cut the grass, uh, the easements on Orange Road, uh, for us, and I told Miss Bennett that I would, um, look into my family, be in of some assistance, um, to the families out in Wash Chapel, residents out in Wash Chapel and Richards Road, to get the grass cut until we can get our, um, lawn mower back working again. So I'm gonna be working on that, um, to make sure that that gets done.
Okay, uh, so for me, first, good evening, everybody. Uh, first, as Councilman Jones stated, uh, I, I talked to Miss Doughty, uh, as her and, uh, and some other residents have been doing great things in Prairie Hill, South Division, so I know, uh, Councilman Randall has been, uh, for a past of being talking about Citizens' Advisory Board, and I think, I think she had a great, uh, platform in terms of how to engage, uh, citizens, residents, and come together, not only as, you know, Prairie View, Prairie Hills residents, but between city leadership, businesses, residents, and students. So looking forward to really, uh, engage the community, uh, because as we build our community, we want to build the people. And I think, uh, she did great things, so we want to continue to work with her to make things, uh, make things happen. And I think, uh, she did a great thing. So we want to continue to work with her to make things, uh, make things happen. Uh, I had a, a meeting with Jimmy Henry, who was, who was a program leader for the co-op extension program. So, uh, he is over the co-op extension program and, uh, I'm getting my master's in community development right now, so they teach us a lot about how to build a community from within the community. Um, and so the co-op extension program, they have a lot of initiatives. Uh, they teach, uh, they have a couple of initiatives, like a do-it-yourself home repair, where they have an angle housing fair where they teach, uh, you how to rehabilitate, rehabilitate your home, but you can save money because a lot of times in our home, maybe air is getting out, so we're losing energy. So that's potential money that can be saved. Um, they, uh, they have other initiatives. Let's see, like, uh, the energy audit where they'll do an audit on your house, um, in which they'll see how much energy you're using. And I feel like in this time, we need to be very cognitive of all these different things. They have a business and development program, uh, where they help grassroots startup, uh, businesses, uh, then help get grant money for federally funded programs. And so, uh, when I talked to Jimmy Henry, he said they, they have, uh, extension agents all over, um, state of Texas, but not one in Prairie View. Um, and so I asked him, what would it take to have an, uh, extension agent in Prairie View? And he, he said, just as simple as talking to Mr. Eric Zimmerman. So I also emailed Mayor Allen about this as well. Uh, we want to try to work with them so that we can, uh, work with them, so we have an extension agent, so we can get accessibility to some of these, availability to some of these programs that are going everywhere outside of Prairie View, even though the co-op extension, uh, program is in, uh, Prairie View and University. Also, um, my, uh, as Ms. Alana Gaskin talked about earlier, the bunch of hands ministry, uh, we, we've been having a pure joy of discerning the community, using the hand that we have in the community to continually build up the community. So as Ms. Alana Gaskin said, uh, we have, uh, service request forms. It's simply just filling it out. I have one of the community service coordinators, uh, talk to you about having a date and time and try to help out whichever way we can. And also I know that we are in, uh, breast cancer awareness month. Uh, so we, I want to, uh, ask y'all, if y'all know anybody that is breast cancer survivors within the community, please let me know. We're gonna try to make gift baskets for them to let them know their recognition and their love within this community. So please, uh, talk to me or there's, uh, a bunch of hands at gmail dot com. It's on the sheet. So please just reach out to one of us so we can continually bridge that gap within this community. And as always, it's a pleasure to serve.
Thank you. Mr. Blastic, I apologize. There's some things from, uh, public words to share. Need to share, so let's go back up so you can make council aware of those, uh, things that are so important to the city.
Good evening. How are you doing, mayor, city council, and the residents of Prairie View? In front of you all, you should have the, uh, October twenty-second operations report for the city of Prairie View. Uh, compliance overview as usual, all the back two, uh, analysis samples have been taken for the month of September and in compliance. Uh, we've also received and filed a monthly production, uh, to groundwater conservation district. We've also-